All right, well, I'm Tim Stauffer and I am here with Myra Gleason. How are you doing?
I am doing really well.
Thank you for being here today. I just wanted to speak with you about your, well, your candidacy for Iola City Council. But before we jump into kind of why you are interested in the position and what motivated you to run, I just wondered if you could give people who don't know you a brief biographical sketch. Who are you? How did you come here to town? How do you spend your days? What makes you happy? Those types of?
Okay, so my elevator pitch, yes, but quite longer. Okay, so I'm again Myra. So three years ago, actually, we opened Wild Bloom, literally almost to the day. We moved here from California, so we're West Coast born and raised. Iola became a vision on the map when we had a friend that was in Kansas City who had the same interest of opening up a coffee shop. We had been dreaming of opening up a coffee shop. I had spent COVID working as a barista and I had this thought, what if I did something like that? And navigating, you know, two years after having that first thought, having that reality of that dream come to fruition, we opened Wild Bloom. And so we're three years in now. We have two locations. Some of the things that make me happy are gardening. I'm a huge avid gardener. There's just something very emotionally regulating that comes through gardening and working with the soil and just watching the world around you move, like creation is such a beautiful gift. I, I find myself to be a little bit more, I, I am basically, I'm a big politically driven person, but not in a way of left or right or anything. My whole thing is we need policies that work for people. So I was doing in high school, I was doing like mock trials. I was doing, I was going to the, our house and our Capitol and, and sitting in the places in which our, you know, senators and our representatives sat. And I was writing bills and I was getting firsthand experience on what actually goes into making a law. And while mine got shot down quite horribly, I, I learned a lot. And I think just having, just having family members that have disabilities, that have had to utilize the healthcare system, it really does open up your eye to have those lived experiences of, okay, this is why I am so inclined to advocacy. So kind of all of that of my childhood and my early adult development, coming here now to Iola and kind of seeing a place like culturally, I still remain in shock. I think it's very different growing up West Coast and then coming to a place that is very traditional. A lot of people don't get out. We have an older population and these are not bad things. These are wonderful things. But there are, you know, stark differences between how I've seen the world work and how it's working here. Like I said, not bad.
That was one of the questions I wanted to ask you was, so you grew up on the West Coast and then you're coming here. And I just wondered what your first impressions of Iola were. And now, three years later, what's changed about those first impressions? What stayed the same? You know, I mean, I'm just wondering if I were to just pick up and move to California, you know, there would be that culture shock of just like, oh my gosh. So I was just kind of curious as to what those, those first impressions were and whether they've stayed the same or changed over time.
First impression has been the overwhelming like joy of seeing what community actually looks like. Within our first nine months, our espresso machine was a lemon and it flooded our entire coffee shop. And people came together who didn't even know us, who just knew that we were the coffee shop people, the California people. And they brought their towels, they brought their squeegees. I mean, April Cranky, she's like, what do you guys need? And she drove all the way back to her house because she showed up for coffee and she's like, you know, I got this for you guys. Everybody drops everything to help you. And the difference in California, if you need help, people will say, okay, I'm available after three, after three, if you still need help. And that's generous, right? So the generosity is starkly different. And so that was one of my first impressions of like, wow, people here really care. They care about, about how you're doing. And I think that that is one of the skills that the West Coast could learn. I always had this little saying of like, if Iola and Sacramento, you know, just swapped, I was like, we would have, I think, a really awesome diverse, the best of both worlds. Yes, 100%. So my first impression of Iola has been like, oh, this is, this could be a Hallmark town. This has the bones, the structure, the community, the, the everything, the reason why you watch a Hallmark movie, it's not for the dumb romance, right? It's because you're like, my God, Christmas in a small town. We have this ability to become that and that's the exciting part. So now that I'm three years in, obviously my eyes are a little bit wide open. They're not as bushy eyed.
Become jaded and disillusioned.
Yeah, I try not, I really, really, really try not to be jaded because I think you can get jaded when you stop trying to take action on the things that need, that you need to take action on. When people stop speaking up, when people, people stop attending things, when people, you know, are-
Just disengaged generally.
100%. And that's a cultural thing that's happened through our leaders. And I'm not saying they meant to do that, but that's what it's become.
When you look nationally, you look at any number, we've, we've talked about this before, church attendance, civic group engagement, just even things like Boy and Girl Scouts. All of those are down, you know, they're just, I was talking with Donna Hauser about this a couple of weeks ago, just generationally. This is a generation that prefers to kind of consume life through a screen as opposed to stepping up and being involved in, there's just, you know, there are ramifications for that, right?
Yes, I had this, I had this thought, like, I think it was about four years ago when we were kind of in the height of like, is this ever going to end? And it was so different in California because we were shut down for two and a half years. Where people tell me they're like, yeah, we were like two weeks, two months, you know? And so they're telling me all of their trauma stories and I was like, no, 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 I got you. Hold my coffee, come sit with me, let me tell you about some trauma, right? And I had this thought of like, you know, everybody says that they're tolerant, but if the algorithms are catering to you and you only follow people that agree with you, you only like things, heart things, right, that, that agree with your ideology or belief system, are you really tolerant?
Yeah, you're gonna be on an echo chamber really, really quick.
100% and that's kind of what we see. So when anybody has like a, does some critical thinking, you know, or brings out a new idea, people are just like, oh, that's stupid. And I was like, well, no, like, let's not call ideas stupid. Let's, let's, let's look at ideas. Let's say, is this accomplishable, you know? And as a professional risk taker and a business person, you have to look at everything as throwing noodles on the wall. You can't just say that one doesn't look good or that one doesn't work or, or, well, actually, that's what you want to say, but you can't say, no, those are all stupid, right? Because it doesn't get anywhere.
Well, and you, that reminds me a little bit of the speech you gave last May to the National Honor Society students at Iola High School, just kind of that. What I got from, from your talk was the idea that kids here culturally are in a little bit more risk adverse environment where not quite those professional risk takers of just throwing something and saying, hey, you know what? I'm just gonna pick up everything, put all my savings into this and if it works, great. If not, it's okay. You know, we're, I remember that one of the differences you saw between where you grew up and where we are. And, and I think that has a lot of consequences, even in, in government, just where the first task seems to be maintain status quo. But there's, there's, there's other things necessary that I've heard you talk about that you see as necessary for growth. And so I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about what you see as, as those elements and, and why we may not be picking up on them.
Yeah, so I think just from, obviously I wasn't born or raised here. I think just coming from a hustle and bustle culture, I, I just kind of want to start and say like, my mom, kind of leaning off of your, that speech that I gave, my mom was the biggest encourager. Her whole thing was like, as long as you're following God, that's all I care about. Her main thing was always to encourage ideas. My father always said, always asked me to critically think and he's like, Myra, does that make sense? So he was always asking me to utilize common sense. I realized I didn't have a lot when I was 15 and trying to argue with my dad, but beside the point. I was raised in an environment where we deeply talked about how we felt, even if we were yelling at each other. And I could bring ideas to my mom, be like, I'm feeling like, I think I want to do this, go do it, right? So I was built to live in a culture where failure is a good thing because you find out what doesn't work. And so coming here, I, business works differently here. A lot of people will blame their, the residents here if something doesn't work out. I think we live in a blame culture. And so that's one thing that I was like, okay, let's not, no matter whose fault it is, how do we problem solve? Like instead of looking at blame culture, and I think a lot of times people have decisions or they make choices and they get really embarrassed of those decisions. And instead, instead of being authentically like, my bad, they put up a front and all of a sudden they harden their hearts a little bit and to where you can't get through to them. They've made up their mind and even coming down to when I first moved here and opening up shop, like people have made their mind up about people from instances that offended them 20, 20 years ago. And I was like, look, I was like, I was like, if you're gonna, if this is gonna be the Bible Belt, let's be about the Bible and let's, if you got at with your brother, go to them. Don't go and tell everybody else, right? So that was one thing that I noticed. And so this aspect of like growth, I've been in very much observation mode, I think, for the past two and a half years. Chickens is what really got me into politics here, August 14th of 2023. But kind of seeing how people think, how people feel, how people go about wanting to make change. We have an older population. I love Iola. I've come to love this city so much. I want other people to come down here, right? I want new families to move here. And we are at a population decline because we have an older population. I think there's a lot of hurt that, that's in this community. And so a lot of people move out because of the trauma that they've sustained here. And despite all of that, right? I'm a big believer of like, okay, that happened, but let's look at what, let's look at the big picture. Let's look at what could be instead of, you know, kind of focusing on, on the issue of like, what is? You know, like, let's look at the big idea, the goals, the vision. And I think at one point Iola had a lot of vision and then we got stuck.
That's one of the questions that, it's, it's actually a great segue. And I've, I, I know you've been attending council member, council meetings of late and, and have been more active. And so this question is kind of two-part. Based on your recent experience and dating back even to August 2023, when you look at the council now, if you were to, to win the seat and be on the council, what do you think you would, you would add to the council? What do you think you would bring? And then what, that second part, it's kind of related, but what are some ideas or some initiatives or some, some things that you would really work for or, or see as really important to you when you would be on the council?
Yeah, yeah, no, great questions. So if I were to win the seat for Ward Three, I actually went through an entire process of looking up every single meeting minute from the past two years. And that opened my eyes to a wide range of things because it shows you who votes on what, who, who brought up things, did anything, did anybody receive emails or things like that? You know, what are some issues that are ongoing? And one of the issues that I spotted is that we are just functioning. People show up, they do what's in front of them and they leave and that's it.
Kind of just going through the motions.
Exactly. And it's wild to me. I, my history a little bit with the council, I can't say has been positive. And that's, and if that's my experience, think about everybody else's experience here and just in the people that I talk to of like, I feel that I don't have a voice, I don't feel seen and I don't feel heard. I feel like there is a large oppression on the voice here where people are so afraid to speak out, not because they're being unkind, but because of retaliation, you know? And having been on the back end of that, I understand where people are coming from. But I was also raised, raised on the West Coast and I was raised by my father. So there's, you know, which, you know-
Different approach to disagreement and conflict resolution.
And so that's, that's one of the things that when I go there, I see nobody is challenging one another. They all agree with one another. I can't say that nobody's challenging. They're 90% of the time, they're all agreeing with one another. And there's 10% about that they are actually engaging in debating dialogue. I, I haven't seen a lot of good ideas. How are we going to grow, right? It seems like our entire council, having looked, this is still kind of on your first question, but looking through the meeting minutes, we have, uh, we are actually all risk adverse. Nobody wants to take chances. We continuously are raising taxes and it's not because we want to, it's because we are using everything from a utility fund. And if we have a declining population, then those that live here are the ones that are always going to bear the tax burden.
So let me ask you then, I've got to, so what do you, answer that question then? Answer that when you, when you're saying, how are we gonna grow and how are we gonna, you know, kind of break out of that, what you see as this going through the motions? Where are some opportunities? And I know maybe if you could kind of think, okay, I'm sure there are some reach, reach ones, but I also think there are probably some ones that you see as, as more attainable or easily attainable than others. So kind of answer that question.
Yeah, so we need a five-year plan. We need a plan that lays out, what are we gonna do in the next year? What are we gonna do in the third year? What are we gonna do in the fifth year? And we have to be able to stick to a plan even when hard decisions have to be made, right? We have to be at a level of transparency with our constituents and not hide behind executive meetings or not hide behind, you know, non reply on emails. We, we have to look at, we are really, I went to the budget meetings and, you know, it's, we, I'm shocked at the way that the budget meetings were, are, are held. And in that place of like, we pay so much in payroll and we could, and I think this is, you know, I'm not in there yet. I have, all I can do is give, with the information is given to me, be able to dissect it to the best of my ability, ask questions, right?
No, that's true. There's information that just because you're not a member of the council or employee of the city, you just, you don't have.
Right, exactly. So I can't say that this is foul proof or this is factual 100%, but 80% of what I have looked at has been, there's a lot of payroll going out. And do we need all of these city workers? And that's gonna be so taboo to say, right? Because the city workers are your neighbors, they're your community. What are they gonna do without a job? You saw what happened with, you know, QuickCom and things like that. Nobody wants to take away jobs, but again, if you have a plan, those are hard decisions that you have to make and a city has to stand behind that.
It's hard to separate the emotion from what you're seeing as just kind of a fiscal or, you know, a financial reality of-
Yes, yes. And if we keep going down this road of declining population, burying the tax burden, more taxes on utilities, we can't, we will not sustain. We will become like Stockton and Detroit. We will be a ghost town. And I know that nobody wants this, but that is the realities. Like if you look back in time, that's the reality of what happens when you overtax your citizens because you don't have anything coming in. So how do we bring in money, right? We've got this beautiful state park that's gonna be opening next year. What are some initiatives that the city is gonna work with? What's the vision, right? Do we have a trail to the square, right? Vision. We must be a city that is so passionate about the future vision. It's not about just keeping the status quo, right? And I think we've had conversations about this in the past. It's not about the status quo. It's that a lot of people don't want things to change because they want to keep tradition. But if we don't change, then we don't have any tradition to carry on to the next generation.
The, the park is an interesting opportunity. And so I want to delve into that a little bit more because there are communities with state parks where it's done wonders and it's, it's a real bringer of tourism. There are other communities where it, it maybe isn't, you know, it might be a tool that is super underutilized. I was at Council Grove this last weekend and they've got a state park and they've got, you know, it's national historic landmark. But when I went and visited a couple of area businesses, it was clear to me that, and I'm not sure what happened to make this possible, but the businesses were aware of the importance of tourism, that they were catering to people like me coming from out of town. And, you know, there was a clear effort to really get my dollars, you know? And I thought, cool. But then there was experience where we were going back to a campsite and there was no firewood. And we went to three different locations looking for firewood. And you know, it's just like those little things that just grate on you. And I was like, oh my gosh, this is frustrating. They've got a state park right next door and there's nowhere in town. But I think that kind of hints at what you're alluding to, right? We've got an opportunity here. So I guess the question is, how are we gonna make the most of it? And, and so I kind of have two parts. One is you're a small business owner. So as a small business owner, how do you look at the park? And then also as a citizen, how do you look at the park?
Yeah, yeah. So firstly, as a business owner, I'm gonna use Humboldt as an example. Because we see people every single day, there are people that are riding bikes from Humboldt coming directly to Wild Bloom because they get the ride in and they get a break, right? So there is this, you know, reciprocity that's going on between what Humboldt is building and the overflow that is coming to Iola, right?
It's a win-win, right?
It is. It's a completely win-win, you know? And that's another part of the vision is how do we partner with communities? How do we, how do we bridge the gap of disappointment to saying, hey, sorry? How do we work together?
Yeah, there's that whole feud between Iola and Humboldt based on what's the county seed. That has to go away, right?
It does, it does.
Relic of like 150 years ago.
Yes, we, again-
Sorry, that's an aside. I'm not trying to get you on topic.
Again, I'm just being like, we're, like, we need unity in a, in a world that is so focused on division. What if small towns were the unifier? What if small towns became oaseses?
Became the model, right?
Became the model for how communities are done well. And that's with everybody being able to work together. We have to be able to really lower our ego and lower our pride and lower our hurt of offense, right? We can't live in offense anymore if we really want to make some strides here. And I, I think that that is where, I'll get back to the, obviously your question, small business owner, you know, the park and as a citizen. But I think that is the biggest line that we need to jump over is like, it's not about if we agree, it's about how do we work together, right? It's about, I'm laying down my offense, I'm choosing to forgive and I'm gonna step up to the plate and we're gonna work together, you know? So as a business owner, the reason why I'm so passionate and wanting to get on the council is because I am the only one, I believe, if I get voted in, that has an open-faced public business. I know, I know there's nail salon, I know that, but that I, that I get tourism. I don't, nobody has to make an appointment to come get coffee. Nobody has to make an appointment to come and get food, right? We are culturally, coffee is what is shaping community spaces in America. We see this in LA that's happening right now, in New York and big cities like Chicago. And I think one coffee shop in Kansas City is people are getting out of the nightlife and they're going to coffee shops in order to experience community. Gen Z is needing places to, to meet, greet, live.
Kind of a public square type of-
Right, they're sick and tired of their phones. We are done with our phones. We want it to be used as a tool, not as a way of life. And I do see that happening within the Generation Z community.
That's interesting.
Especially because I hire them.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, but you're very much, you know, your, your daily experience with Gen Z probably is as much as I get in a whole month.
Yeah, yeah. So they are, they are funny, funny little kooky people. But it's, they're, they are the product of the environment culturally, socially and, you know, personally that they've been raised in, you know? So as a citizen, what does the park offer? It would be really, one, I love being able to see people, I don't know, right? I love being able to see other people's wonder that comes from, wow, it's a small, look at these small towns. You got Humboldt, you got Iola and then you got the state park and it's a beautiful state park, right? There is a, the, I kind of want to go back to two questions ago. So me as a citizen, I'm gonna love it as a citizen of being like, I can go out there and camp and also if there's an emergency, I can go right to my house, right? So I think that's like, it would be a beautiful staycation. We're gonna have trails, more trails to walk, more places to bike, places to like, say, if we, if we wanted to do a campout, we know that there's a night there, we can grab a group of friends, you know? Like, I think it is so important to have nature reserves available to the public. And kind of going of like, what would it look like if I was on the city council? I would love to see some PR done. We cannot just expect the PR done to be on the Iola Register or with the Iola Chamber, right? We can't expect that the city actually needs to invest in marketing. We need a brand. We do not have a brand here. We don't have an identity.
Where do you think that comes from? Or, you know, I mean, I get the sense that you believe that's just, doesn't occur naturally. That takes an intentional effort and some planning and some energy behind that. How do you, how do you get a brand, you know?
Yeah, how do you get a brand? It's like, you have to look at like, let's look at some big brands that are out there. How did they, how did Amazon become Amazon, right? How did they get from out of their garage? You know, it took vision, hustle, work, community, unity, working together and finding ways to problem solve. If you have a need, let's look at it, right? I think in this community, this community is really hurt. And I don't mean that in like the emotional sense, I mean, that's a big part of it too. But I mean, in, we've had so many businesses that people have gotten attached to, go, come and go, right? And a lot of it is when I got here, I was just like, how is nobody able to stay in business in certain places? You know, you've seen the Iola Register has done great pieces on, you know, businesses in Humboldt, businesses here. And then if you were to go back to those articles, that business isn't even in, isn't in business the next year. And I think a lot of people don't want to get attached to something in just in case they lose it. So we have some deep rooted attachment issues here of people seeing good things go too quickly. And it's because there wasn't a vision to sustain it, right? So Iola has to find its why. We have to cast a vision. We need, in, in, in all sorts of that, we need a business plan. You know?
Yeah, no, that's an interesting, almost gets at the mentality that you're scared to be hopeful because you don't want to be disappointed or you don't want to be let down. So you never get your hopes up and just kind of sit with something that isn't quite what you're hoping for, but it's good enough for now. Is that kind of what you're-
Yeah, and then the good enough becomes tradition and then the good enough becomes nothing ever happens with this town. And then the good enough becomes when people try and do something, then there's, you know, other people who are like, well, I didn't like that idea. Or this and that. It's just like, okay, well, let's not bad mouth somebody who's trying to do something.
Let me bring up a couple of topics that have been at the last, they're at least on the council's radar and I think there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion about it and there's been some progress. First, I want to talk about housing. Because I know that, that when you look at what community members say, housing always comes up as a big need. And the answer always seems to be, we need all of it. We need apartments, we need single-family homes, we need multi-units, duplexes, we need big homes, we need micro homes, we need tiny homes, you know? It's kind of the answer always seems to be yes. So when you look at the housing issue in town, what are some of the things that you see as, as necessary for, for growth to occur?
Yeah, so when I moved here, there was nothing available to me. The only thing is that, that you could find was an Airbnb that was willing to be rented out monthly or you had to buy a home, right? Those are the two options. And for the last, I would say up until maybe, maybe two months ago, I know that they've got the, right across from Walmart, they've got that new hat, they're working on it. We just had one of our employees move into that and I was able to find that through a Grow Iola link there, right? But I don't think a lot of people- A Grow Iola link there, right? But I don't think a lot of people know about Grow Iola, but I don't wanna go off topic.
Got those, the duplexes up by G and W.
Yeah, we just got this grant over here, the twenty-three billion, million dollar grant, right?
Ooh, I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't know.
For the Jefferson and the Lincoln's.
Sorry, um, I was, I was looking the wrong direction.
No, that's okay.
Then I also think about um, uh, Jennifer Chester and Blake Boone with Cedar Brook North. That the city put a lot of money into that to extend the road and the utilities. And then of course, yeah, you're right with. USD two-five-seven and, and thrives helping getting that, those tax credits for the school. So there is some movement.
There is.
As people want, but.
But housing isn't gonna, you know, it's like, if you want it fast, then it's not gonna be done well, right? But we do need a little bit faster, meaning we need to have. So what, what comes with like your one, three, five year goals and your vision, right, is saying, hey, this is, this is our main goal. For the year twenty-twenty-six is that we're gonna get another grant or tax credit to go towards. This building over here or to purchase, you know, using one of the land banks, um, one of that land to build on for housing. Right? So it's not about as like, like, so what do you do, right? Like, how are you going to fix it? This is not, you, this is not a one-person job. This is hopefully. As a council member, we have to be so transparent with our constituents. Because they need to see that progress is being made and many times we are left in the dark. So you see something at council, you see it in the newspaper and all of a sudden you go, okay, cool. Months go by and people are like, was that ever gonna happen? And there's nobody that says, gives progress updates. And then if you ask them, they won't, they won't be transparent, right? If you ask them a question, they say, oh, come to the city council. I was like, but I'm asking you because you represent me.
Okay, let me ask one more question because. The council eventually, and they've talked about this a couple of times before, the, the. Eventuality of a fifty-four, highway fifty-four rebuild seems to be, the case seems to be pretty clear, that the road base. Is deteriorating and we've gotta act in the near future. So the first question I have, again, it's another two part is, is what's your take on, on the fifty-four rebuild? And two, your business is right on fifty-four. And a lot of businesses have expressed to, to us here at the register. Their concerns about, you know, closing that highway, what that, how that affects their bottom line and just. Traffic that comes through, people may be driving from Wichita and they'll just say, hey, you know what? I need coffee and pull off the side of the road and, and. By the same token, they may say, hey, I need some shoes, there's Jock Snitch. And so that's a concern for businesses because a lot of times in these small towns. Margins are tight, you know, you don't have. Enough savings to pad your way through six, twelve, eighteen months of construction and so. I just kind of wanted to hear your thoughts on, on fifty-four and, and what you think. How, how can we help small businesses if, if, if it does end up closing the highway for, for, you know, for an extended period of time?
Yeah, so the city and the county need to be a lot better at working together. You see, the city has marginal funds and Allen County, as people say, they got all the money. I'm not saying that that is the county's problem, but when you look at like, hey, is the quality of life for our small businesses going to. Be able to sustain long-term growth if we're shutting down for, let's say, a year or two, a year and a half, right? So my view is that. Looking back on. The meeting minutes, like I said, I've only gone back two years because it's a lot of information to process, like it, it really needs to be like, it's a task oriented thing.
Pretty dry reading too, I imagine.
Yeah, and you have to be able to just really be like, oh, okay, so they voted against that, okay, um, or they voted for that. What it really comes down to has been negligence of funds for the past two decades. When you really look at things like, we've known, council has known that we are going to have to do this project. And in twenty-twenty-five instead, right, we paid for Wichita State to come and do an assessment on. How much payroll should be and how much people should be getting paid. And so we raised payrolls. And we actually, uh, for the last seven years, we have only allowed sixty thousand dollars. To go towards plumbing and roadwork yearly. That means we can work on one corner a year.
Not enough?
Not enough. We, I mean, when it really comes down to it, our. I'm not gonna say our council members knew they were doing this, you know, this is decades long, so not, not all blame goes on the last four to five years of council members. But because of the apathy, like apathy, I feel is like strangling this town. Because of the apathy. We have not done our due diligence of. Putting away money and like I said, I've not been here long enough to see where were the holes. But I do have five years to look at with the budgets and be like, what the heck? You know, and this has been my whole thing. It was my big issue with the um. With the, the sales tax for. Yeah, to like offset property taxes, but then because we had to, we had to raise the mill levy for the city, right? So you don't get anything and part of that vision plan, and I'm gonna go back to eighty-four because. If we need it, we need it. We're not gonna get out of it. If it is like, nobody wants to be driving and be the next version of a Hollywood movie. Where the entire road sinks in and now we've got a bigger emergency on our hands, right? Like. We flood here and when you have all that flooding that happens, you have all that corrosion that happens. So like. According to just the ways things are built, right, engineering wise, we've known about this. We should have been more proactive in, that's why I'm saying, goals. What's the long-term growth? How do we get from? This to this within this time limit, right? And that's just with every single business too. So as a small business owner. Uh, walking back to your question there is, yeah, it is gonna be a concern. So how, that's what I'm saying. So do we start after the first, you know, um, section of the Portland? Lehigh Trail Parks so that we can at least get some tourism, right? So these are things that we have to problem solve. Do we get the tourism coming in first before we do this, right? Let's get some funds. Also. I'm not, not about raising the sales tax. It has to be for things though, that's not just gonna constantly always be paid for, right? I wanna see a sales tax, raise it to nine percent, right? We're at eight point seven five now, raise it to nine percent, but that extra point two five. That's what goes into an economic development. That tax is used to bring in industries, to bring down businesses. That tax is used to bring in new families. That is money that says, we have this business, we need these funds right now and we can say, yes. That is an industry here that creates new jobs. Small business, you know, ninety-nine percent of America is made up of small businesses. We are employing eighty-five percent of the workforce.
Yeah, one we always talk a lot about. It's great to have these three, four, five hundred employed businesses. But it's also, it's risky because given the state of the economy in today's world. You always wanna have. The assurance that if a business like of that size closes, that your town doesn't receive its death sentence, you know?
One hundred percent.
Look back through Iowa's history and you can look at hall decks, um, you can look at. Middle and boats, you can look at a lot of different places and you can, middle and breaks, sorry, you can just kind of say, hey. Hef Jones, we have to be able to, to. Have a resilient enough local economy. Small businesses are such an important part of that. Because you don't have all your eggs in one basket.
Yes, and small businesses are actually what drive the most tax dollars. Which, right, that's sustaining every single business that, small businesses is what sustains our economy, right? So, uh, you know, I, I was guys, just like, I just paid that person's salary for the year, you know? But that's what our taxes are to be used for, so it, that's the reason why as a constituent and you get really passionate, like I have been about. What the heck is going on in this town? Why are we constantly having to, uh, keep our hands open and be beggars? You know, um, and that's why, that's why, you know, what I say might offend or be controversial, but. At the end of the day, if people really love this town like they say they do. Then changes have to be made and hard decisions are gonna have to be made as well. You're, you're not gonna be able, I always say, it's just like, do you want a little bit of pain now, pain now, but long-term happiness? Or do you just want pain, do you want to have pain later on? But have everything instantly.
Well, this is my, my last question for you and it's something that I've been thinking a little bit about you. About when, when I think about your candidacy and I, I kind of wanted to, it might seem a little bit dorky, but I just kind of wanted to, to ask you. I, I know that you're an avid gardener and so I wanted to know what lessons. You take from gardening that you would apply to your job on the council. You know, I, I wondered if there's anything that you say, hey, gardening has taught me X, Y, and Z. And this kind of informs how I think I would work on the council or what, how a council. Needs to, needs to operate. So it might seem a little bit out there.
Yeah, um, I truly believe that politics actually start in the garden. You have so many insects vying for the same blossom, the same fruit, the same environment, living in the soil. But guess what? They all coexist together. They all know their role. They all know the part that they need to play. If somebody is, you know, for instance, let's look at spiders. Spiders are incredible for eating actually a lot of the bugs. That are not beneficial, that will destroy your, your yard. We look at, we don't like wasps, but wasps take out all sorts of things, right? Every single insect, every single uh, creation has a purpose and they are all. Working in unity, but they're also fighting for their place in their own ecosystems, like we all have to eat. And so the more that, the more that, and here's the thing, the more that we plant as gardeners. The more the ecosystem actually gets rewarded from that, the more flowers they have to pollinate, the more, um, the more. The more thirsty the squirrels get and eat all your tomatoes or your cantaloupe, right? But so you don't have that, you're just like, I, I give it to you as tribute. But gardening is so. Uh, is so informative on watching the world work around you. How could you not? Bring those lessons into the real world of where you're actually working with the wasps. You're actually working with the spiders, you're looking at the garden snakes, you're looking at the bumblebees, the people who are creating, like. That's the whole thing about bees, right? They pollinate and then they create something for us to eat. So what we plant for them is ultimately the reward that we get and there is that co-creation. You know, and that reciprocity that really comes from. Being in tune. So if we as a small town can plant more businesses. It's only going to help pollinate so that the tourists that come are actually creating. Like a nest of nectar, of honey that we get to bottle up and share with others.
Yeah, no, I, I, I take from that the idea that. Diversity, coexisting, there's this cycle that growth begets more growth and that success and energy, you know, they all kind of. Cycle into each other and um, I just think that's a really inspiring vision for our community.
It is, it is, you know, our, we need, you know, if you look at it, the tourists are the honeybees. We provide the space, the tourists come and pollinate and then we get the reward of the honey with it, you know? So we have to work together. We have to, we have to, we gotta get over ourselves. We have got to get over ourselves if we are going to grow and that's really what it takes.
Well, thank you, Myra. You've given me a lot to think about.
Yeah, this has been great. This has been a lot of fun. Uh, you guys, I should, I, I could do podcasting all day, talking to people, it's so fun.